Good evening, welcome to the Graybriar City Council Run Out Candidate Forum on the ride at Graybriar and on Graybriar 5 with the Legal Vote Voters. I'm Kathy Thompson of Go Down or Go Graybriar. We're a nonpartisan group of young residents with diverse backgrounds and ages, united in our dedication to increasing accountability, stewardship, and transparency from local government. Your city council has a big impact on your day life. The council decides when you will be along, what new restaurant can come down, where our state sidewalks will be, how emergency response teams are staffed, and much more. We hope what you hear tonight will help you choose who's the best person to make those decisions. Questions asked by our moderator, Lori Kipko, were compiled from these submissions and put to your candidates and to others who ran in May. One candidate told us that all the questions they received are the best and most applicable to what actually happened at Kipko. We hope you agree. There should be enough papers and just to go around on your table. If you don't have one, please let them with a neighbor. There are no cards with pens on the front table, so submit your own questions later this evening. Our moderator, Lori Kipko, will now introduce your candidates, explain the program, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I woke up this morning, and I'm getting tired. So, that's really bad. So, what was less we had? That's really typical of here. I was there several years ago, by hand, and by the way. The Legal Vote Voters is a bipartisan organization which works through their political responsibility through informing and acting for this day of all citizens in their government. The League does not support or oppose any political party or any candidate. The League puts Congress as its, as a public service. I'd like to introduce our candidates for tonight. Running for place assembly is Doug Odell. Running for police sixth, Lou Anghes. We're four candidates for tonight, but we... Each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. After the opening statements, the program will be opened. Questions that this organization has answered. And candidates will be given a comment and answer each question. At the end, the candidates will begin with one minute or closer. So, let's start with our opening statements. And after questions, the walking, competitive questions, read the audience, and I believe their cards back on the table. Back on the table, and we'll see how many we can get to. So, let's begin with our first candidate of who did... Good evening. And thank you. And thank you all for pointing out. How long is our opening statement?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. My husband and I have lived here in Graybriar for over thirty years, and we have lived for a few. Our girls went to school in G C Dynasty Schools. And we've been a part of this community since day one. I started a business here in nineteen eighty-five, or something like that, in eighty-four. And I immediately got involved, joined the Chamber of Commerce, been a member for since nineteen eighty-five, and the voting division, it got involved, and got involved in committees, and it just became part of Graybriar. It was part of our Graybriar Festival we had here, and had been part of those successful festivals throughout the years, and doing a lot of volunteer work here, in the service. Despite my new full-time job, I worked for the Health Care Month for thirty-two years, I was the executive. Then I retired, and I went to work for M R A. And I worked for M R A for eight years, and then retired again. So, now, this is my next great career, is continuing to work for the city of Graybriar hopefully as your next city councilperson. I'm passionate about Graybriar. I think we have a wonderful city, not a lot to change, but we do have issues, and I think our community needs a strong and independent voice, someone that will not be a rubber stamp holder. I do have strong opinions, I do my homework, I'd like to know what's going on, and I'd like to be part of discussions about making good decisions for our citizens and our city. So, I look forward to that, and thank you. Welcome to this interview with our talker, Brian Fuller, lead of the group of candidates. She would handicap when you thirty seconds twenty times, and Brad, one hundred times. Now, we're here for our candidate, Lori Kipko.
Well, thanks for coming out. This is a very important decision, and this race isn't really about experience, it's about being ready to make decisions. I have been spending about the last ten months getting ready to make decisions. I've met with every department head, I've gone to all of the different committee meetings, I think I missed golf and the Board of Appeals. But other than that, I've been going around making sure that I knew the different areas of the community, how they were running, what their needs or what their current status was, because when this election happens, you don't have a lot of time to figure out what you need to do. I have a reputation of being just an action taker. If I see a problem, if I see an opportunity, I go out and take care of it. We saw the World Festival and event city designation being available, so I went out and figured out how to do a presentation, and we were so fortunate to be able to win that for the first time. With volunteers, I've been out there working with them, they know me, I don't watch them work, they know I'll be out there with them, making sure that our events, our city always has the exact best events going on, and that we always look our best. So, basically, I'm looking at issues very level-headed, I make decisions after a right feel, research, and talking to other people. I look forward to answering some more questions, letting you know more about me, and I look forward to being your next councilperson. Thank you.
I don't know what the noise is, I don't know how to fix it.
I'm going to ask you, after a block, after every answer, I'll make it a little bit faster. Our first question is, how will you encourage members of our community to become all in municipal papers? Let's start with this pen.
Terrific. Can you hear me if I don't use this form of thing?
No. Use it. It's bad. Oh, re-formation. Yes, I am a faithful believer in people being involved in the community. I have been on the steering committee for over fifteen years, I've been involved with all of the different events. I talk to people all the time about how to get involved, how to start out as a volunteer, and then end up getting on one of the council-appointed boards and positions. If you don't get involved, you really don't have an idea on what needs to be happening and what opportunities there are, so yeah, definitely get people involved.
So do.
You know, there are so many opportunities for people to be involved in this city, lots of community organizations, volunteer efforts, so get me as involved as you want to be. As far as communication, our city has a good job in that we have a wonderful website with a lot of information. You have to dig a little bit, so you have to be infinite enough to go and look and see what's out there. I'm shocked, I guess, that the low number of voters cannot vote in this election, you know, I think people cared more about city politics than they seem to. And I think a lot of people think they just follow along, that's okay. But you didn't have to be aware, and you have to live it forever on your own, but I think we can do a better job of communication. I would like to foster our communication efforts in maybe a monthly or a quarterly meeting, just say, come in, meet your councilperson, talk about what the issues are, maybe they're going to come talk. I'd like to encourage schools to come in, and really get involved in the city again, and see what's happening at the city council level, so I think we can do a better job all the way around with getting our citizens involved.
Thank you. Our next question, where your work to create an environment of transparency.
Well, yeah, I think transparency is good communication. There's a lot of information out there, sometimes you have to go a service for it, but I do think we should be transparent. We have a great story, it's on Graybriar, and our citizens don't always know that, and so I think there should be a high level of transparency, and yeah, I think that's good communication. Sometimes you can go a little bit, and you have to show them where it is, and show them where it is on the website, and get them involved, but absolutely, we need transparency in everything, that's just the communication. I think that very much a huge need in transparency when we started doing the live stream of the city constituents, I think that is going to be the best thing from a number of different points. So, one, if you are interested, you can stay at home, you don't have to go out, but more importantly, in terms of staff, if there's no reviews or open records requests, it's going to make it much easier for clients, all of that information will be indexed, so that you can say, oh, I wonder what happened about this case regarding your community, or you'll be able to just click on that and see that piece of reviews. So, I think that was a huge event that needed to happen, and it's great if only made everything better. I think the important thing about transparency is that essence is you have to be willing to look. If you have all of the information in a clear plastic box, and you're not willing to look in, then the transparency that you have really doesn't matter. So, I think it is getting people involved, letting them know where to find things. The city budget, it's online, there is so much information available if you just start to look.
And then, do you support video people? The council shows the news?
Miss Kansas.
Yes.
Would you repeat the question? I'm not sure everyone's got you.
Okay, the question is, do I support the videotaping of the council meetings? And since I'm here, I'll just cover that one, I'm just going to go, yes. And sad question to be answered. Absolutely, we're a little bit behind the times again, I've just seen you guys done that, we've had them all the time, so I was excited when our council voters to do that. I think, well, in our system, as a matter of view of what goes on, maybe through watching, because I don't have to actually attend to it, but you can watch, you can click down and capture the subject, if you're interested in fast forward, and get it in, so I think that's a great strategy for our community.
And then, question, do you support the current policy of council re-persons without receipts?
The question is, do you support the council's current policy, current policy of reimbursement without receipts? I come from a background in the Department of American Labor, we have receipts, so I have the hogs with receipts. I think one thing that might be easier, because there's so, or so many, it's not just the city council, you have receipts at every level, and there's a certain amount of administrative that goes along with that, somebody, you have to pay somebody to do that, but maybe a credit card might be, well, we had, you had credit card, the receipts were clear on everybody's sheet every month, that was a method that might be, so I would have the hogs with that. I think that either way, I mean, obviously, having a business and being a business owner, you have to have receipts, and you have to have documentation. On the other hand, I think this was put in place by Jerry Pittman, and never in my life have I known a man who made more economically conservative decisions than Jerry, and at that point, he really felt that it didn't make sense to have staff time to cut a check for, you know, five hundred seventy-three dollars versus five hundred and twenty-five dollars the next week, so I wouldn't certainly go pushing to change it, I truly don't even know how much the rate is. That isn't why, I don't think either of us went into this, it's for the money we're paying, but I think it's important that whatever the city staff feels is going to be best for them, is exactly what I do.
Why don't you keep that, you could repeat the question. Do you support term limits?
Do I support term limits? No, and I can tell you why. This time, I've been very proud to be, the four people that ran for city council this time all had the right reasons. I've seen too many years where someone got angry, or had a thumb bone to pick with the city, and they decided to run for that reason. If we had been forced to have to ask someone else elected, Graybriar would not be in the position it is right now. I believe in term limits nationally, but I will tell you, if there was a city council person in this town that was not performing at the level that they needed to, our citizens would come out and they would give a term limit to that candidate. And, you know, our voters voted clearly and loudly in the last election, they did not want candidates. I believe in a town the size of Graybriar, we really do have term limits, because as Lian said, when you have, when you get to know candidates, you know most of the people in a small town, for all purposes, we are small, and we create our own term limits. I do believe they're necessary at the national level, and while we don't have them in Congress, I don't know, but that's another story. But I do think that the, our position we have in term limits, not having term limits works well in a town our size. If we were bigger, I think maybe I might have a different opinion, but in a town of Graybriar's size, I'm happy with that.
Next question, we cannot miss. And Graybriar is completely built out. What do you want to see Graybriar's population numbers in five to ten years?
Okay, next question. Okay. Recognizing that Graybriar is not completely built out, what do you want to see in Graybriar's population numbers in five to ten years? How about some financial, we can add to that. You know, we have about forty-seven thousand citizens here in Graybriar right now, and that is based on the economic impact of airport and all Graybriar's business, all the surroundings. We've got pretty good mix, I think, of single-family homes and multi-family homes, and I don't think we'll see a huge growth, I don't think we will see a huge population growth in the next five years, we'll see some, but I don't think a whole lot. So, you know, what we have, and what we have in our city, you know, we're sort of laying it out, so we got to work on anything that's the best that it can be for the population we have and the city limits. Population wise, I agree with what we say, say, I think that from a construction point of view, we're going to see some tremendous change. I think that a number of the homes are going to be remodeled, and we're going to have a lot of clear downs and rebuilds, which is going to help keep the property tax level higher, which is a great thing. It's going to help keep the property values higher, and so, I don't anticipate a lot of change in the population, I do anticipate that we will continue to see the growth in the values, and just from the advantages of living in Graybriar, you know, we provide such the best city services at the very lowest tax rate of anywhere around, and so, our city staff is possibly one of the best staff I understand. I've been to many international festival events meetings, and we talk about staffing, and how festivals, we all work together, and if there's a problem, it doesn't matter who is there, they'll be there to help, and people look at me like I'm crazy, so our staff is amazing, and our services are superb.
If you keep my question. What should young Graybriar voters vote for you?
Why should a young Graybriar voter vote for me? Interesting statistic that I found out this week, in Graybriar, there's twenty-five percent of the population based on the two thousand and ten census, that's under eighteen. There is about eight percent that are over sixty-five. At our election on May tenth, thirty percent of the voters were over sixty-five. Four point one percent were eighteen sixty-five. Now, I'm not saying that because I think that the older voters aren't making the right decision, I'm just frightened at what's going to happen in ten years when the ninety-nine eighty-year-old older voters are no longer with us. The younger voters have got to get involved, they've got to engage, they've got to see where they want their city to go, and they can't sit back and say, oh, no, I can't change it. Of course you can change it, you go to the polls, you make the choice, and that was a staggering number, and I think it's so important that we, from my point of view, we're technically very savvy. I'm on all of the social media, and I will be working out there with you, so that's what I feel. Why I think a young Graybriar voter should vote for me is because I hope to help them get ready to take our places at some point in time, but there's people like me who work very hard here for the past twenty-five, thirty years, that have created the environment and the city, and the services and the schools that they now enjoy. So, they need to take pride in that, and they need to be grateful for that, and I think they need to be grateful of that. And knowing that people with experience, and that have a passion for the city are doing, they need to turn that on. When you look at our parks, when you look at the recreational facilities that we have, Dove Park, our baseball fields, we're doing things for our young people that a lot of cities don't do, and that didn't just happen, it was people like me, and many of you working, that created that environment here in Graybriar. So, I think they should take pride in that, and if they're ready to take over, I think they should vote for me. Okay. If you support, if you support recycling, single-family and multi-family residences and businesses, how will you work to make it work out? You know, Graybriar is light years ahead of many cities, not just in our area, but in the state, in the nation, on recycling and becoming a green city. We had a presentation last night as city council from one of the departments, and they were talking about what their department is doing, and all the other departments are doing the same thing, and really working to eliminate the paper, to become more green, to work on recycling. And I think our education at the city level is now working on our citizens. We are, we just recently passed an ordinance where people have collection of dirt and things that will go out to the landfill, not go to the landfill, will actually be recycling twigs and things that can be recycled, and saving all the landfill, and actually helping with recycling efforts in terms of turning that into something useful, so I think Graybriar's doing an outstanding job. Our kids will not let us not be recycle-friendly. If you dare put a hand down, that will tell you. So, I think we're doing a great job, and I think we're doing a great job educating our citizens. Recycling, Graybriar has come a long, long way. Recently, the Chamber of Commerce instituted a new program where they're getting corporate involvement in recycling, which I think will be huge. We also received some grants that the city is going to the multi-family dwellings of the apartments and the condominiums, and those are a better job of educating those residents, and I think that will help increase our percentages. Certainly, the brush, the bulk brush pickup on the two different lenses is right, all you have to do is have your little paper bag, or you can put it in the container, you don't have to have it in a, in a paper bag, but recycling is what we need to do, it's the only way to prevent more destruction and preserve our environment for the kids' government.
This one's way too long. Is this one yours, or is this one mine? Number nine?
What will you do to advance active transportation improvements such as non-recreational cycling and walking to everyday destinations, and enhanced walking and cycling facilities? I think Graybriar's done a really good job with bike trails, and now that they are putting in the extension to connect the booth wall and the Graybriar hills, bike and bike trails, I think that's going to be phenomenal. We have to be mindful of the bikes, and the bicyclists have to be mindful of the drivers. I'd like to see some events on Saturday outside of our park, outside of our park, where you get people, just remind them of safety issues, the bicycles, you do need to stop at those stops, cars, you really don't want to cut them off. And so, I think it's a communication issue, it's an education issue. As far as additional laws or ordinances, unfortunately, I really don't think they'll work. You know, I'm not a big believer in, let's make another ordinance that can be enforced or is it possible to enforce. We have about eighteen miles of high-end bike trails in Graybriar, we're very blessed to have that, and we see a lot of, Graybriar is a bike-friendly city, and we do share roads, and we're called a shared road city, and we share that size. I think for the most part, our cyclists are very, currently isn't well-trained, and are very safety-oriented, however, there are a number of people that are not, and I don't know that our drivers always do a very good job of being aware of our cyclists on steering the same roads. And our police department works in tandem with a couple of the organizations in town that are biking organizations, that are looking for ways to continue to support safety and being able to use the roads, and, because a lot of people like riding more, and actually in white parents, they don't have their bikes more than they want, and that's certainly a big thing in Ireland, and we want to try to support that, but I think you just have the word measure, that safety is the primary concern.
This question is, city?
What would you do to make the streets safe for all users, including pedestrians and cyclists? Well, again, I think it's working with those organizations that are really, are right and fair, and we do have a couple of bike organizations that, they know good people in Graybriar that buy bicycles and support that, and I think we have to work hand-in-hand with our police department to make sure that we are providing a safer environment, and things, education and training, for all people don't know how to sit out on the streets, that they're okay on the sidewalk, out on the street, so I think continuing education is a piece of that as well. Yes, again, it's just an efficient, it's ongoing, it's reminding everyone that you have to get along, that you can't decide that you're the only person in Graybriar, even though we all have to think that we're the best, you know, it's just getting along. The police do a good job, they're out there monitoring, I like the speed notices that they're posting, the little electronic speed trails. I think that's a great idea, it tends to slow you down, and it makes you realize suddenly you're not as fast, if you're going on that silver press, then you probably shouldn't be excited, that's something that needs to continue, and just keep educating and talking about it. How do you plan to diversify local tax revenue in the future from hotel, motel, details, to other industries? Well, let's start, you cannot separate and change how the hotel motel taxes is spent. It has to be, it has to go back into conventions, visitors, and hotel properties. It has to be good promotion for Graybriar, that's not an option. You know, when you, when you talk about Graybriar and tourism, you have to remember that eighty-five to ninety percent of sales taxes that are gathered in this community come from non-residents. That means those people are paying for all the cool services we have, so I think that I don't see any reason to change that. Other industries have to want to come to town. I've had three or four people that want another grocery store. Why can't we get another grocery store in North Graybriar? Well, until a company is willing to come here, it really doesn't have. When you add to that that we really don't have the land for another company to come, we have some very small issues, so I think mainly we just continue to be towards the financially conservative and monitor how we spend money, and that we don't waste anything. Again, you can't diversify, we are locked in, as Lian said, on some of the, how money is used as far as taxes are concerned. Our sales tax revenue again, which is paid by a lot of people who don't live here, they come to visit here, and they're glad for that, because we do enjoy a lot of benefits. That money goes into our general fund and is used for the benefits and services that we enjoy, so it pays for a lot of things that our residents enjoy, but we didn't have to pay for, so that's a break in. As far as using our sales back, and our sales tax revenue, we're going to do a pretty good job of that, and continuing to put that back into the system it was intended for, and right now, I think that works, that works pretty well, so we don't have a lot of leeway there in terms of how we can do most of that.
Do you support stengel member districts, or head lures?
City council district?
City council districts? In a town our size, and I think I said this earlier, I really like the at-large positions, the whole smart. The question was, do you support single member districts versus at-large city council districts? And we have at-large, we have six places and we serve all the citizens. I think in a small town where you know everybody, you sort of know who the people are that represent you, I think it benefits our citizens for us to work as a team, the council and the mayor, to benefit all the citizens and not focus on one area. Now, if we were in a large city like that, I can see where you might want, you know, single district positions because you focus on your area. Hey, so I look for representing all the citizens and not just one district. So I hope that stays at you, I like that call.
I agree. I think that the at-large is the best way to go. Until we have a large number of incredibly qualified candidates that we know are going to be able to lead in all of the different areas, I think that we will be really doing a disservice to the council, to the citizens by limiting who could run which area. If elected, will you pledge to return all consistent emails and phone calls, even if you disagree with a resident or business owner on a particular issue? Jason and I have been in a financial planning investment company for 25 years and our policy is that if you haven't heard back from us in 24 hours, that message didn't get through to us because that's just not the way to operate a business. My theory is when I take a position as the city council owner, it is another business. I have a duty and a responsibility to talk to everyone. And if I limit myself to talking to people that only agree with me, I'm not going to get nearly enough of the ideas that I need to be able to represent everyone. You know, there's a very vocal minority on a lot of issues. And I think the majority of the people that may not be talking and being as vocal need to be heard and represented. So yes, I will return all calls, all emails. And I think the other issue, we need to be careful that we do good communication. So often you see one issue pop up that's maybe a total rumor and it tends to run through Ray Brown like wildfire. We need to be able to stop those and limit the vote before it becomes a disaster of a major proportion.
Absolutely. I come from a corporate background, but we have an open door policy. Any employee who won't write in the president of Delta Airlines and have a problem with the airport, and that's heard as well. I had 14,000 flights of this that had my email number and home address and I heard from most of them. And that's good because you don't know what's going on if you don't listen to them. Throughout this campaign, I published my personal cell phone, my email address, and I've heard from a lot of people and a lot of things we can do very well. It was interesting to get through those conversations and have discussions. A lot of them didn't really retain Ray Brown, but they just want to talk, they want you to hear your opinions. That's very important. And I will repeat that, I enjoy doing it, I enjoy hearing from people. That's how you learn and that's how you, you know, if you're doing the right things, when you hear back from your constituents as to how they, how they view what you're doing. Now, if you only have a lot of you know what you're doing, you don't always have the best decisions. So it's always good to listen to people and I fully intend to continue doing that. And there's open questions for you, definitely.
That's really such a good job.
Do you have, did anyone have a question written on a card that they'd like to ask?
You can just ask it if it's okay with, I mean, it's okay with us. Yes.
Oh, Hannah, I don't know your background very well and I didn't get to hear much since you had two minutes. Can you talk a little bit about your background with Ray Brown and how you got involved and your experience with the school districts, et cetera?
Certainly. I started, oh, sorry.
It doesn't work.
In case you didn't hear the question, she wasn't, she likes more information. So basically, we had two boys, they're 23 and 21, they both went to the public school here in Ray Brown, graduated from Ray Brown High School. As soon as they got to the age where they pick up volunteer with me, we started volunteering for the custom made street banks. I was on PTA boards, I was very active with Heritage Foundation, I was on that board for six or eight years. Actually was the chairperson of the palace when it reopened, which was just a wonderful experience. I've been on convention visitors bureau board directors. I have, I'm a member of, I don't know, 11 different organizations. I'm one of the Heritage Foundation members, I'm one of, on the historic downtown Ray Brown Association, the Air Force, the historical society, and I'm running out of 30 seconds. So I've got a pretty rounded background. I also have had real estate experience because we've had buildings that we developed, built in New York. So I kind of have a very rounded experience.
About the ladies, right? I've all this. We have been, it's been a long campaign. You know, my background, and I mentioned that I worked for Delta and I've been very blessed to have been asked to serve on a number of boards. I've only really sought one position and I was fortunate to get that. But I was only one of seven employees out of 70,000 that was asked to serve as an employee representative on the board of directors of Delta Airlines, was very honored to do that. I started on the board in Grace. My girls went to Ray Brown High School, one went to Ray Brown High School because there was no probable heritage and the other two with probable heritage. So I was obviously in the school all the way through. I now serve, I'm the only woman on the advancement foundation corporation for the diocese of Fort Worth. So, you know, I've got a pretty well-rounded background in business finance, marketing, business development. I've been blessed to be able to do that in a number of boards. I've served on the jobs that I have.
Would you ask, ask a question?
Our moderator asked if he would ask questions to voting candidates.
I don't know if I need the mic. My name is Chuck Holman. We've had a business on Main Street in the historic district for 18 plus years, my family. The merchants on Main Street in the historic district are 60 to 75, very concerned, hardworking people. And I guess my question to both of you, how do we protect the brand of historic downtown Ray Brown? Merchants are very concerned about that. We continue to put more restaurants in the historic district. Every time there's a new restaurant, we lose retail space, we lose the opportunity for the boutiques and those neat little shops we have on Main Street. So I guess I'd like to hear, what is your vision for protecting the brand of historic downtown Ray Brown?
You know, we, we do have a great brand, as you say, in historic downtown. As the mayor said, he would come and say, you know, I love what we call the historic district, definitely anything like that is a little void. You know, I think about history, it's very different. But I think we've done a lot to preserve and protect the buildings and the look and appeal of downtown. And as you say, every time one business comes in, others, some benefits, some probably suffer. I don't know that we have a master plan of the historic district from a five, a 10, and a 20 year perspective. I'm used to that and I, this is happening now. And we may have it, I just don't know it. But I'd like to see that. If we don't have it, I think we need to because instead of making one-off decisions about this restaurant coming or this business coming, we want to look and see if it fits in the entire plan. And it might be there, you know, not having been on the side of the front end. But I agree, we do want to protect the brand and make sure that we protect all the business owners that have been down there for a long time.
I think that historic preservation is one of the keys to protecting that brand. I think that, you know, as you look at things, you have the issue of when a business goes out, how much governmental interference do you get to get? If it's just a restaurant that comes to town and wants to be in there, are you better off within a building? Are you better off with a restaurant? Do you need to go out and promote to look for other shops and other boutiques and some really interesting hip stores? Yes. But to some extent, you know, the master plan needs to be there and then you have to make sure that you have companies that are willing to come to town. So from that end, we need to make sure that as the convention visitors bureau is doing right now, they continue to promote downtown, they promote the shopping. Certainly in the last 15 years that I've been involved, the business owners in downtown Ray Brown have made amazing strides in the quality of their product, in their, in their understanding of how important the conventions are. So I think that was a big step that the business owners took to be halfway. The, I think that there's something out there having all of this convention visitors bureau make sure that each of the stores knows what companies are in town. If you know what conventions come to town, you're going to know what product goes to stores, you're going to know what they're here to look for. And obviously, anything Ray Brown may always sell. But I think that's important and we do need to, to just do, work together to protect the law.
Sorry, I totally ignored that.
I totally, I knew that.
Another question?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Hart. I've heard a lot about how fabulous Ray Brown is and I agree, I live here. What is an issue that you think you'd like to work on? I mean, like, I want to know why are you running? What is, I mean, okay, there's got to be some place where there's improvement needed and I'd like to hear from both of you on what that is.
You know, as I said, Ray Brown is the best place to live, but there are, we're not perfect and we do have to, parking downtown is a huge issue. And we've got to look for solutions. I have, the council's not born under that, they've been talking about solutions for a while, but I'm looking forward to getting part of some good discussions about that because we do have to consider our parking issues. We can't pour it up concrete to solve our traffic. We just went through the diamond area, the neck of the project and it's still blocked on 114. And, you know, I want to find out what we need to do before the tax rail, what's holding that up, what's happening, what can we do? I'd like to be able to see this, be able to tell on a train, you know, here for downtown Dallas for Fort Worth. So that's something I think we need to consider. And, you know, we've done a great job, I think, of balancing the industry that's come to town, hotels and attractions. And we've got some land left and some part of Ray Brown is made of, and we'd be very, very, very strategic in those discussions and I will be part of that.
I'm going to answer the second part of the question first of why it's decided to run. I've watched the city council for years, they haven't been on the news, they've worked together, they haven't had a lot of infighting that we've seen. And I felt it was so important that you have someone ahead that can do good research, that will talk to people and make calming decisions for the community. So often you see something happens and not only has the baby been thrown out, but the bath water, bathtub and sometimes the entire bathroom. So I felt really strongly, I want to see that voice of sound reason. Things that need to be improved in Ray Brown, voter, voters, we need to get people voting. That was my goal initially. I met the people that I wanted to, I went out, I wanted to, I'm on 3,000 doors, I did. I talked to 1,100 households and I met great people and I was very impressed. And now I have to figure out why they didn't come out and vote. And so that's, that's a challenge. I think that's a piece that we've got to get, people involved in Ray Brown to keep it strong, to keep it going forward, to keep the vision so that everybody's pulling right in the same direction. You know, there are some issues, I think communication, we need to be better at communicating. A lot of the things are coming out now and I've been there and I didn't know about them. There's this really cool app you can put on your computer to go to facilities and to know what facilities for that. So I think it's just making sure that all of the residents, in whatever way they get their information, are important.
Other questions? Yes.
Now let's open to our electric question. What is the last, when, what, which ordinance, what's the last ordinance that you have actually read the text of or have you ever read the city's charter? As a council person, you suppose your job is to enact legislation, ordinances essentially, or are you there as a business owner?
Yes, I did read the charter. I got all the way through to the P and Z and then I stopped. At that point, I knew that it would be any more technical issues than what I needed before I was elected. The day I'm elected, I'll get through the rest of the, 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 those periods. I've read many ordinances. I had a citizen send me an ordinance that they would like to get enacted now. I think that you cannot defy a business owner and ordinance making. They have to go hand in hand. You have to make practical decisions as a business owner and enact those ordinances. Too many times, a business owner gets to town, they want to make sure that the city council understands how important businesses to the community. They need to understand that services provided to the citizens are incredibly important to the community. You cannot separate and say, I'm only going to be for this because it just won't work for the government of Ray Brown. Just have to work together.
That's a great question. Actually, yes, I got a copy of the city charter early on and if you need some lab reading that will put you to sleep at night, that, that will do it. I think this is very technical, but it's very interesting. There were a couple things that I earmarked that I wanted to follow up and ask questions that the department has because I didn't know I was understanding it as I read and I'm looking back at it. There are ordinances that are voted on that are either current ordinances or new ordinances at city councils almost at every city council. We had one last night, it was interesting. In fact, a gentleman called me talking about, he had written up door bills on his door that he would vote for. And that, long hold, that came up last night. But it's about pedaling. And pedaling is considered door to door sales. And we have city ordinance that we had to change, we had to alter the timing because we need to stay long. So that's very interesting how, you know, we have to make sure our city ordinances, you know, go hand in hand with state ordinances and that requires some homework. The city council gives a good crap on what the issues are. We get a little bit of that as citizens answer enough to know what's going on. But I know it sounds crazy, but it's kind of interesting stuff. Other question? And now we can have our closing statements, okay? Perfect. We're ready for candidates to give their closing statements, starting with Louie.
This is a one-minute thing?
Yes.
One minute.
Okay.
I think that you've seen a little bit more of me today. I am a strong, independent-thinking woman. I'm an experienced leader. I don't manage by intuition, I know all the rushes. I am energetic, I'm committed to the community, I'm committed to the volunteers, I'm committed to the citizens and I'm willing to work and research and do whatever it takes. And most importantly, I'm willing to listen and I want to hear from the people that don't agree with me because that's the only way I want to.
Thank you. You know, there's no doubt that we're going to have a long time, citizens here, love Ray Brown, have probably a lot of similar qualities. I believe that I am the best person for this job for several reasons. I think that my personal experience, my business experience, my family experience, my commitment to Ray Brown and my strong record of service to the great self. This is the next level of service as far as I'm concerned for serving Ray Brown. No one will do it better because I love this town. I only want to do what's best for Ray Brown, along with, I think the other members in our council, they are dedicated. I will be dedicated, I will listen to you, I will represent all of us and I will be the best person to take Ray Brown to the next one. Please give our own applause.
I'd like to thank you all for attending tonight's forum. For more information about our group or online at Ray Brown's on work, I'd like to thank our landkeeper and our moderator. I'd like to thank our landkeeper and our moderator, Tamara. I'd like to thank our candidates, Adelle, Luanne, and their families, our virgin and sorbonne. We hope that you heard something tonight that helps you decide if you're still undecided. If you have friends that have been with the state tonight, you reported a video that you reported city council meetings for about a year now. We're so pleased you can say that they support you reporting council meetings without that contract is only rolling. The election is Saturday, June 1st, and early voting begins next Monday. So get ready to vote tonight.